Can the citizens get Liz's beautiful sticker?
We have them at the town hall front desk.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down.
There's the sticker.
Modeled by Vanna Franzen.
Etsy.
Oh, yeah.
For the larger ones.
All right. Thank you all. Again, beautiful sticker. There's a few examples around here. Is that going to be an annual thing? Are we going to do a new sticker every year? Awesome. All right. Next in front of us is public comment. No action will be taken on these items. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak about items that are not on the agenda. This comment period is limited to 30 minutes of total time, with each individual allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak. You must sign up ahead of time in order to comment, and that sign up begins 30 minutes before the start of the meeting. The council will accommodate as many speakers as possible during this time, with preference to town residents, but if public comment extends beyond the allotted 30 minutes, town council will continue public comment to the end of the meeting prior to adjourning for those who have signed up before the meeting. As any matters raised by individuals during public comment are not on the agenda, and other potential interested parties would not therefore be aware of the discussion of these matters, town council will not engage in dialogue regarding any items raised during public comment. I do not have a sign up sheet in front of me. I thus think it's blank. Okay. With that, is there anybody in the audience willing, wanting to address town council tonight? Seeing none, we'll open and close public comment at 7:05 PM and move on to reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. Laura, start us off.
Good evening, everyone. I had the pleasure of attending with my fellow town council members and the mayor this past week the Chambers extension opening, and I think the mayor's going to talk a little bit more about that. And also, it's back to school for everyone out there. I know a lot of moms and dads are getting busy, ready to get their kids back to school, as I am doing that as well. And I'm also enjoying the last days of summer at the Parker Recreation Center and the Parker O'Brien pool with my children. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Eric, please.
I have nothing to report.
Whoa. Uh-oh. Your Russian Dyak, sir.
Uh-oh. Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, the 24th, E470, had a finance committee meeting. Again, we're just talking about high-level refinancing opportunities, just more of a prep work on things to do from this point through the end of the year. And really, that is all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Wilks, please.
So myself, along with the mayor, attended the 20-mile mixed-use groundbreaking ceremony. And then later that evening, I attended the Boots Not Suits, which is the Arapahoe County Fair kickoff. So a bunch of Arapahoe County elected officials, and they extended the invitation to Parker, so I was pleased to go and be a part of that. We had the wine walk put on by the Parker Chamber of Commerce. This was their third wine walk of the season. It was, despite the little bit of rainy weather, it was still a huge success. I think they said they had over 750 people at this wine walk, which it's a great boost to all of our businesses in downtown Parker. Along with what councilmember Hefta said for the Chambers Road ribbon cutting, I also attended a swearing-in of two of our new police officers, including what I call a legacy officer. That officer's parents both worked for the town of Parker, and that officer's sibling also works for the town of Parker PD, so that was exciting. We had our Parker Police National Night Out, which was fun to get to go and see our SWAT vehicles and see a couple of our, well, I guess only one apprehension dog was there, but just to watch the interaction between the community and PD and for them to learn more about what we do and what we offer was wonderful. And then we had a ribbon cutting for Sun Med Spa through the Chamber of Commerce, their new homeopathic spa here in Parker next to Safeway, so that was wonderful. Honey Festival was on the 3rd, which was yesterday, and it's always fun to see and learn about our pollinators and to buy, obviously, yummy honey. And, well, let's see, where's your list? I don't want to take away what you might be talking about. And then today, we had our Greater Parker Foundation Board Meeting.
Thank you. Barrington?
So not too, I guess the only other thing that I did on the 24th was I had a board meeting for the Douglas County Housing Partnership, and I think everything else has been said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everything was taken away from me, so that's all that was reported.
Thank you. So as Councilwoman Hefta touched on, we had the Chambers Road ribbon cutting. I should have brought my speech, because all the facts and figures are in there, but an amazing project, many, many, many years in the making. Alternate route to Parker Road ultimately connects Bayou Gulch to Chambers and all points north. Incredible road. We had a groundbreaking with E5X, the developer of the Tantara property, and also Looking Glass, who is finishing up, or I'm sorry, Dreamfinders, who is finishing up the Looking Glass parcel. Two huge contributors. In fact, the developers are paying for the road, so those now are coming out of our coffer. And I think it's important to recognize our developer partners. They build the community we fall in love with, and I do think it's important to call them partners, because they're the ones that are building the infrastructure. We get deed into it, and it becomes your asset in the long run, but they're the ones that spend the money upfront and get that road out there. So very, very proud of Chambers Road, and I know that our neighbors in Stroh and Trails are very, very happy to have an alternate route. And staff, yeah, thank you, John. Tom Williams and his entire crew, hours upon hours of work, over years upon years, to get this road built. The special thing about this road is it was built to its maximum of six lanes of travel from the beginning. So you notice there are the points in town, or as we're going through right now, some widens of some smaller roads. This is not that. This road is done, and it'll be done for the future. So very, very happy to attend that. On Wednesday, we did have the Parker PD swearing-in. Prior to that, we actually had a employee cookout, one of the many things that this organization does for its employees, but everybody was welcome to the police department and enjoyed some fine food from our friend Jeff, who used to be the owner of Rory's, just a great, large-volume cook and some incredible food. On Thursday, I had the mayor and commissioners lunch. This is a monthly meeting where the five mayors of Douglas County meet with the three commissioners, and we just talk and sit down at Duke's and have a nice lunch and just catch up and make sure we're kind of on the same page. And then, as was stated, Sunday was the Honey Festival. I did not get to attend, nor did Councilwoman Barrington, because we were asked to play in the 30th anniversary of our, I like to say, our sister city, Lone Tree, celebrating their 30th anniversary. So they had a golf tournament over at Lone Tree Golf Club, and I got to play in that and just had a blast. And so I just wanted to thank Lone Tree, especially Mayor Marissa Harmon, for the invitation. It was an honor to be there, representing Parker. Thank you. And then lastly, I apologize. One more thing, and I'm going to embarrass her because she's in the room. She's not going to recognize herself, because she doesn't want the recognition, but there's an incredible article from last week's Chronicle that a certain Haley Lena wrote, but it's about a young woman from Parker. Her name is McKenna Keenan. And I'll let you read the article. It's online. It's a great article, but she's just an incredible story. A long time ago, she had a mass in her brain, was causing some headaches, and so that led to, or I guess it was always kind of her dream, but that intensified her dream of being a neurosurgeon. Currently, this year, McKenna has 300 volunteer hours, or roughly, I think I figured it out, to 37 full-time days of work that she has done for Skyridge. So Skyridge honored her by nominating her for a volunteerism award, the HCA Health One's First Humanitarian Award. And she won the Continental League, and now she's on to go higher levels. But also, I think the last point here, McKenna is a legend high school student, but she is on track to finish a year early so she can get started in her path. So recognition to McKenna Keenan, and thank you to Haley for an incredible article. Please, it's on the last page of last week, or it's online. Thank you all. Appreciate that. Moving on, next, we have Consent Agenda. Real quick, I'm going to read this in. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of Consent Agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the Consent Agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. Counsel, I understand there's one item that we may want to talk about more, so I would entertain a motion to remove item 5E from the Consent Agenda.
So moved, I would like to remove item 5E, proclamation, commitment to volunteerism, Just Serve, Sean Gann from the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Hefta and a second from Wilks. Todd?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
Thank you. That item has been removed. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda items 5A through D, please.
I move to approve Consent Agenda items 5A through 5D.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Wilks, second from Hendricks. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
Consent Agenda passes, and next, we will open item 5E, a proclamation to comment on volunteerism from the JustServe.org and Mr. Sean Gann. Sean unfortunately could not be here today, but we still thought it was important to recognize this individually. Laura, floor to yours.
Yes, thank you so much. We have a wonderful opportunity for Parker to become recognized as a Just Serve city. And so I would like to take a moment to explain what Just Serve is. Just Serve is a free online platform that connects volunteers and organizations needing assistance. Just Serve, overall nationwide, has facilitated 165,000 community service projects since its inception in 2012 and has been in Parker for the last 10 years. The Just Serve is sponsored by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints as a community service organization. You can learn more about Just Serve at JustServe.org. Our own mayor's day of service is sponsored through Just Serve and has been for the last many years. Our mayor's day of service this year will be on September 6th at Cottonwood Park West, starting at 9:00 AM, and is sponsored by Just Serve and organized by Sean Gann in Parker. Anyone can participate if you just want to show up at Cottonwood Park West on September 6th and enjoy the community engaging in a project to clean up the area. Last year, we had one at the Salisbury Park area, and we went around and collected all types of different wood so that the Parker Recs and Recreation could come pick up that later. So a lot of time, it involves getting out there. There's a tent. You can come and get some water. You can meet the Just Serve folks. You can bring your kids. It's a wonderful community organization, and so I would really encourage anyone who wants to serve their community to come out on May 6th. And of course, our own mayor, Josh Rivero, and myself will be there, as well as some other town council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Bear with me. It would be my honor to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas we firmly believe that the values of compassion, empathy, and community support are the foundation of a united, harmonious society, even as they foster greater connections and transcend differences. And whereas the strength and prosperity of our town is based on the selflessness of its residents and their willingness to serve and uplift one another. And whereas we acknowledge the profound impact of helping hand extended to neighbors, what, I'm sorry, excuse me. Whereas we acknowledge the profound impact of what a helping hand extended to neighbors can achieve, especially to those in diverse backgrounds, lifting them up and collectively working to improve lives. And whereas we nurture and culture of giving within our town, emphasizing that volunteerism is not just a duty but a source of personal fulfillment and community strength. And as we work side by side and learn from each other, mutual understanding increases, misconceptions can be corrected, and new friendships are built. And whereas we urge all citizens to care for one another, volunteer and engage in acts of service, kindness that contribute to our town's betterment and its inhabitants, well-being, and background or beliefs. And whereas the town of Parker has joined a growing list of supporters, including the president of the National League of Cities and hundreds of leaders in making a commitment to volunteerism, be it resolved that I, Joshua Rivero, mayor, do hereby proclaim that the town of Parker, Colorado, commits to promoting volunteerism and encourages all citizens to find ways to volunteer, leveraging entities like JustServe.org to make it easier to find and engage in volunteer opportunities, and to acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of volunteers in our communities. In wedges thereof, I inherit to set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Parker, Colorado, to be affixed on this day, the 4th of August, 2025. Obviously, I haven't signed it yet, because we haven't passed it. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the proclamation, commitment to volunteerism, as part of the regular agenda.
Counsel, do I have said motion? I have a motion from Dyak. Do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a second from Hendricks. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Got that into the record. Real quick, before we start, I'm just going to take this back to the town clerk. Okay. Thank you all. All right. Next up in front of us is Section 6, ordinances. Item 6A, an ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinance number 1.659 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the memorandum of understanding for pre-qualified building departments for public school construction pursuant to CRS 22-32124 and 23-71122 between the Colorado Department of Public Safety, Division of Fire Prevention and Control, and the town of Parker. And presenting to us is the one and only John Nelson tonight. John?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. John Nelson, DCBO, here to present ordinance 1.659. This is a bill for ordinance to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Colorado Department of Fire Prevention and Control and the town of Parker. This agreement designates the town of Parker as a pre-qualified building department for public school construction. The purpose of this MOU is to enable the town of Parker to provide public schools with the ability to process school construction projects through the town of Parker Division if they wish. We have been, had an ongoing agreement with the state since August 2015, and this agreement is good for the next three years, so we'll see you again in three years.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for staff? Yes, Brandy?
I just have one. Will it include charter schools, expansions, or just new construction?
Expansions, remodels, all construction activities, excluding electrical and plumbing.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else with questions? Thank you, John. I will now open it up for public comment at 7:20. If there's anybody wishing to address this council on this specific item, please let me know. Seeing none, we'll open and close public comment at 7:20. Moving on, final talking points or debate? Todd?
Just standard MOU agreement. I'm in favor.
Barrington?
Thanks.
Wilks?
Everyone for working together.
I appreciate it. I think this is going to make it a lot easier on our schools when they need to get stuff done and kind of streamline that process, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Dyak?
I'm good. Thank you.
Franzen?
I have nothing. Thank you.
I know firsthand that some of the schools in the community that I've spoken to, constituents, really enjoy working with the town of Parker, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion on this ordinance.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.659 on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Hendricks and a second from Hefta. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Next up in front of you is ordinance 6B, ordinance number, I'm sorry, is item number 6B, ordinance number 5.37.2 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to repeal Chapter 4.05 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning unclaimed property. Ms. Kelsey Hall, please.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. First of my two items this evening. As you just stated, this is an ordinance to repeal Chapter 4.05 of our code regarding unclaimed property. So this past legislative session, the legislature passed HB 251224, which modified the state's Unclaimed Property Act. Previously, it had an exception for local governments, municipalities, that had their own unclaimed property section. So they got rid of that. That means any unclaimed property that we hold now needs to go to the state. If it belongs to us, we can claim it. I did chat with Finance. They said that this would maybe impact us $30,000, $40,000 a year, so nothing huge. I mean, not small change, but not, you know, a giant effect to our budget. This would just kind of clean up the code, because by Operation of Law 4.05 no longer is of any effect.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Todd?
No questions.
Anne?
So if there's unclaimed property, it automatically goes to the state, or we still have to do, it's still an administrative process for us to?
I think that we would just turn it over to the state. There's procedures in the statute for how we would do that as the holder of the unclaimed property. And before, we kind of, we went through our own process to try and get it back to the folks that we thought it belonged to.
If you had to guess, how much extra revenue do you think this is going to bring to the state?
The state as a whole. I couldn't guess on that.
Interesting. Thank you.
Brandy?
Are there currently any items in the town's possessions that will need to be transferred to the state under this new law?
I had checked with Finance. They didn't seem like they were concerned about anything that was in progress. It sounds like we have our own process where we kind of go through year by year, so I think we were able to hit it pretty smoothly, where we weren't in the process of trying to return anything. So I guess the answer would be no, technically.
Okay. Thank you.
John?
I have nothing. Thank you. Thank you, Kelsey.
Of course.
Eric?
My only question, I guess clarifying that we're cleaning up municipal code to comply with state laws. This is a cleanup.
Correct.
Thank you.
And Laura?
No questions.
Just real quick, one question. Can you clarify that $30,000 to $40,000, that's a cost that the town will incur?
It's not a cost, really. So the way that I think about it is, let's say that you got a gift card to the Pace Center, and you forgot about it in a drawer for five years. We haven't been able to recognize that income, because it hasn't been used for services. After that five years, under our current, I guess previous code, now that it isn't in effect, you would have to find the owner of that gift card and say, hey, we need to give this money back to you. So we haven't recognized that income. It's, if we couldn't give it back to the person, then that could go into our cultural fund or our general fund, so it's kind of like a bonus.
And then just real quick, so this would then now, as the state does so well, yes, some on the record saying the state does something well, the Great Colorado Give Back, this would go back to the Colorado Great Colorado Give Back, and then allow the state to find those people and make sure that they get their money spent?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, I will open up public comment at 7:25. Is there anybody in the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:25 and go back for discussion or comments. Todd?
No comments.
Anne?
Thanks for keeping us compliant.
Brandy?
Thank you.
John?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Eric?
No comments.
No comment.
And I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 5.37.2, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 5.37.2, second reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Franzen, second from Wilks. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Oh, sorry. Let the record show that passed unanimously. Next up, we have item 6C, ordinance number 9.388 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement by and between the town of Parker and the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County regarding responsibilities for and maintenance of school zone speed limit signs, beacons, signed beacons, excuse me, on jurisdictional boundaries. Mr. Chris Hudson, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. A little background here. In 2009, the town annexed the Sierra Middle School and Plain Lane Elementary School sites. These sites are on the edge of our incorporated boundaries. I'll have a vicinity map in a minute, so you can see where those are at. Some of the associated school zone beacons were on roadways approaching, approaching roadways, were outside of our incorporated boundary. It's really important that a single entity run these beacons, half in, half out, run different software. They might be a little bit different times on them. So in 2009, we agreed, basically handshake, with Douglas County that the town would, basically would be responsible, because the school sites were in the town. So we assumed the maintenance of those beacons, and we use a different system than Douglas County does for the school beacons, just Chevy versus Ford. They both get the job done. But we installed our equipment back in 2009. Picture on the left is what one of these school zone speed limit sign beacons look like, and then the map on the right shows, the red dots are actually the beacons that are just outside of our boundary. There are six of them that serve this school, these school sites. Three of them are in the town. Three of them are in our incorporated Douglas County. So we have been maintaining equipment outside the town since 2009. So earlier this year, Douglas County was finalizing their design for the Pine, what I call the Pine and Pine Project, Pine Drive, Pine Lane Improvement Project. Caused a big stir over there, because they opened up the cabinet, and they went, whoa, this isn't ours. What's going on? This is, a lot of this had to do with, none of the Douglas County staff that we worked with in 2009 are still there. They're all gone. They want to get cleaned up. So this IGA proposes to actually transfer the six beacons, even though we annexed it, they still feel that they're their beacons. They'll actually, all six of them will be transferred to the town, will own, operate, and maintain them. For the three beacons outside the town, we basically get an agreement, a license, to access and do routine maintenance on them, on those. And then if anything comes up in the beacons that are outside the town, we need to either remove them or add beacons out there. We have to get basically a permit from Douglas County to do this. And this is what we're always going to be doing anyway. It's just formalizing it, and that's what Douglas County really wants. So staff recommends approval of this IGA. There's no new costs. We've been owning and maintaining them since 2009. We're required to approve this ordinance. And then the Board of County Commissioners is scheduled to review this on August 12th, is what I was told today. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I'll start with Laura. Any questions for Chris?
No questions. Thank you.
Eric, any questions?
So if we don't take these three, right, if they, I guess, revert back somehow to the county, the county then has to financially pay for them?
They would have to operate them, is basically what they do. And the concern there, Eric, is that different systems have, everything's done wirelessly. The clocks might be different. They might have different policies as far as when the school beacons start to flash and turn off, things like that. But in theory, right now, we could walk away and say to Douglas County, these are your three beacons. We'll take care of the ones that are in the town. You have to take care of the ones in the county.
And was there any consideration back in 2009 when we took those on, financially or otherwise?
No. Basically, it was a handshake. I was part of the, basically, the group that agreed in the field, and we shook hands out there. And we took the school sites. There was a bigger push to annex an enclave area, so we took the school sites in 2009. It's the cost of having a school in the town is to take care of the beacons. That's what we do on all of ours, but most of our school sites are truthfully more inside of our core. These are the only locations that we've got a school site that's on our perimeter like this. So it was kind of a unique situation, and we agreed to take them over back in 2009.
Got it. Okay. So I guess to reiterate, there was no consideration then. We're not seeking any financial consideration from them. We just kind of maintained status quo.
Status quo. Get it written down, so that if I leave here, which at some point I'll retire, somebody else can pick it up in the future and know that the town's responsible for these beacons that are just outside of our boundaries.
So my last question, can we ask them for some financial consideration, or some, something to help defray the cost of maintaining these long-term on their behalf?
That has never been asked. If you were to ask for funding now, we'd have to not approve this IGA today, and I'd have to go back to them and start negotiating funding. We've been maintaining them for over 15 years. And so, I mean, anything's on the table, but we thought this would be, again, back in 2009, there was no money involved. It was just, we'll be responsible for these beacons.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
I have no questions.
Brandy?
So I guess kind of piggybacking off of Eric, because my question kind of ties in with that. Not so much necessarily asking Douglas County for financial assistance, but just out of curiosity, how much does each one of these beacons roughly cost us to maintain every year?
All things considered, it's pretty cheap. There's, if you were to open up one of these beacons, assuming they don't get hit, let's just say that, but to maintain them is pretty minor. It's, every three years, we have to replace a battery inside. And of all things, right now, we are in the process of advertising it for a replacement to the computer system that's in it. So you've already funded for all these beacons in the entire town this value of the employees' time, then they go out and they inspect them on a quarterly basis to make sure they're working, probably $500 a year would be my guess per beacon.
Okay.
Because there is staff time to go out and physically make sure everything is still standing and the thing's flashing properly. But all things considered, they're pretty autonomous and they just-
Fairly minimal cost.
Yeah, solar powered, they have a battery. And the battery's really the only thing that wears out. About every three to four years, I replace that, a single battery.
Perfect.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anne?
No questions. Thank you.
Todd?
No questions.
So just real quick, as you stated, the two school sites exist wholly inside the Town of Parker.
Correct.
And there is maybe a code or a policy as to where these beacons shall be placed in regards to where the school is?
So this gets back in, there's this funny thing called engineering judgment. And when I first started with the town 25 years ago, we had zero beacons in the Town of Parker. Council funded a couple hundred thousand dollars back in like 2004, 2002, somewhere in that area, where we installed everything you see in the town. Now, new schools come online, it's part of the cost of the school. They install the beacons. But-
So I think back to Councilman Franzen's question, the county doesn't have to put beacons up if we say no?
No, and of all things, they've taken beacons down. The Parker Core Knowledge Site had beacons, and because there's no sidewalks, they took the beacons out. So there is no, it's best practice to have beacons. We're not required to have beacons, but it's, in the metro Denver area, schools have speed sign, speed limit sign beacons with them. We should be consistent with all the schools in the metro Denver area.
And as usual, you read my mind because I was going to Core Knowledge next, but you, you beat me there. So can you just, real quick, I know these aren't truly smart systems, but they are responsive, as you said, wireless. So when there are odd days where schools out for whatever it may be, we can program that, program that in, and it's good to have them all in the same system?
Yeah. So the current system's, the system company's called LTAC, that runs a wireless system. So if there's a snow day, go to a program, wirelessly through our, we have some radio antennas with some, on some traffic signals, it sends a program to it. Let's say a school changes their start time, we can remotely reprogram them from a computer. So they're pretty autonomous. The next generation of tech is really going to be on cell phones. And that's where I expect the communication system's going to go with the RFQ that we have, RFP that we have out right now. So-
Thank you, sir. No further questions for staff. We'll open up public comment at 7:36. Any member of the public wishing to address counsel on this item, please make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll close comment at 7:36 and go back for council comments. Todd?
Yeah, this seems pretty straightforward, getting them in favor.
Anne?
I think this is a great example. It's when someone from this town retires, it's almost like a library burns down. So, you know, it's all about student safety. So I'm happy that we are ensuring that this moves forward and that a verbal agreement or a handshake has finally been being put into writing. So thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Brandy?
Yeah, I appreciate the conformity between all of our signals, to your point, you know, when there are different schools that get out at different times and different vacations. I appreciate that we don't have to necessarily worry about the traffic impacts of that. So thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I mean, I'm supportive. You know, things were done in the past, you know, on handshakes, as Chris indicated. I remember many, many years ago, we had a discussion regarding salt. You know, I guess we were using some of Douglas County's salt, they were using some of ours. We had a tally sheet. It all worked itself out, but we kind of got to get more, more official. And, you know, we all work together to kind of solve, solve these problems. And if we have a school and we have beacons that are already there, I think it's our obligation to take care of those because that's the Town of Parker school. So thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, I'm somewhat conflicted. You know, there's, there's three of these beacons in Douglas County, and we're not getting any compensation for, for doing anything for these. Now, I think an important note with Parker Core Knowledge that, you know, we go and press Douglas County and say, hey, come give us some money to, to maintain these beacons. Douglas County's probably going to say no. And guess what? Those beacons are going to go away, which is not the intended outcome. You know, I think, you know, this isn't, this isn't adding cost because it's already there. You know, so again, I'm conflicted because I feel like Douglas County should, should compensate us for it. But on the other hand, I, I think these are important safety, safety features for our schools, so.
Thank you, Eric.
Perfectly clear.
Yes, it actually is. Laura, please.
No, school safety is always paramount and number one in this town. And especially for our children, these beacons are very, very important for not only the children, but also the cross, crosswalk adults, helping the children at all locations. But I do appreciate the good working relationship we have with Douglas County. And we have goodwill with Douglas County, and, and this is, this is goodwill. We want to take care of our citizens in this town, and Douglas County reached out to us. So we're extending our goodwill and our good working relationship with Douglas County. And again, thank you for the Department of Engineering, Chris Hudson. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, entertain a motion on ordinance number 9.3888, please.
Move to approve ordinance number 9.388 on second reading.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion from Wilks and a second from Barrington. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes, and that second was from me.
Oh, whoops. Let the record show that the second came from Hefta and not Barrington. Sorry. And that passes unanimously. Next up in front of you is the Hilltop Road Project. Chris will be presenting, from what I understand, you'll have one presentation, Chris, on both ordinances. Is that correct?
That's correct. One presentation for both ordinances. They, they affect the same property.
So, thank you. And so counsel, in your packet are two ordinances that I will accept, two separate motions on. Hilltop Road Project, ordinance number, excuse me, item D1, ordinance number 1.651 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance accepting the conveyance of real property from Core Electric Cooperative for a parcel located on Lot 9, Parker Hilltop Square, First Amendment for the Hilltop Road Project. And ordinance number D, or I'm sorry, item number D2, ordinance number 1.652 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the public sidewalk easement agreement by and between Core Electric Cooperative and the Town of Perkle, Parker, for parcel, for a parcel located on Lot 9, Hilltop Square, First Amendment for the Hilltop Road Project. Mr. Hudson, please.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Back in November of last year, Town Council approved ordinance 1.635, authorizing us to enter into good faith negotiations for some improvements on Hilltop Road just east of Parker Road. This, this ordinance that we got approved back last year, the acquisitions impact the three properties. Tonight is the last of the three. Two of the three have already been acquired, and Core Electric Cooperative is a property in question. Given the way that Core decided to execute these, we actually have two ordinances tonight. First ordinance is for accepting of real property, and the second ordinance is approving a public sidewalk easement. The cost of the permanent acquisitions, that's what we're talking about tonight, is just over $7,000. But we are also acquiring a temporary construction easement that is done, doesn't need to come to Town Council because it's temporary in nature. So all permanent acquisitions have to come before Town Council for approval. Total acquisition cost for everything, including the temporary construction easement, is $10,658. And again, these ordinances are required to approve these. Moving forward, the acquisitions at the northeast corner of Hilltop Road and Pike Peak Drive, if you've driven by it lately, Core's in the process of expanding their electrical substation there. This affects right, things right on the corner. The image on the left is a right-of-way acquisition. This is a little acquisition there that we need to get of a 400 square, just over 400 square foot, a small sliver, sidewalk easement for where the sidewalk's going to slide a little bit to the north. And the last thing is the temporary construction easement, it's a bigger area on the right. Again, total cost for this is just over $10,000. And staff recommends Town Council approve these two ordinances on second reading. Answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Senate Council, questions for Chris? Laura?
No questions. Thank you.
Eric?
No questions.
John?
Yeah. So in kind of dealing with other, it's not a public entity, but other providers, partners, have, have we ever done this without, without a fee, like Parker Water and Sand and other items? And if, if we have, is this, is this different and for what reason?
Yeah. So we do a lot with Parker Water and Sand. In the 25 years I've been here, we've never exchanged money. In my 25 years, I've never had to acquire anything from Core.
Okay.
We have a franchise agreement with Core that basically says that we'll give them our property-
Yep.
-at no cost.
Yeah.
But there's no reciprocity in that agreement. Core just bought this property for the substation expansion, and as part of the good faith negotiations, they wanted paid for it.
Yep.
And so that's how we came to, the agreement was basically what they paid per square foot for the property about 18 months ago. And that's how we came to the valuation, the property required. But John, again, this is unique. We, I have never got property from Core.
Yeah.
And just, it just, it's never happened.
Yeah. I don't, I don't remember either, creating those many, many years ago. But, yeah, no, I mean, again, I just, I use Parker Water and Sand because, again, those would always come. Core's a little different. Again, great partner. It's just, it'd be interesting to maybe explore that a little bit further after this. I mean, I think the process, good faith, I think everything is, goes according to what we, what we do to fairly compensate the people when we have a capital project. But, you know, I kind of, I kind of throw Core into the same grouping as Parker Water and Sand, and I'm probably doing so inappropriately. But-
No, it was, it was a point of discussion between myself and my counterpart at Core, like, just never done this before. And just, it was, I was like, normally I would get this for free, and they kind of pushed back. Again, part of the good faith negotiations.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Eric?
You already asked me.
You're coming this way.
That's what I meant. Thanks for picking- Brandy?
So when you say that we're purchasing it for what they purchased for 18 months ago, does that mean we're purchasing, purchasing it for exactly what they purchased? Or are they making a profit on this?
Exactly what they purchased. They, they did open books with us and showed us what they paid per square foot, and they agreed. So the right-of-way is 100%. The easements was 50 cents on the dollar. And temporary construction easement is, we're just renting the property, it was 10%.
Okay.
So-
All right, thank you. No questions.
No questions again. Todd?
No questions.
You should ask Eric again.
Eric, you sure?
No questions.
With that, I'll open up public comment at 7:46. If there's anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel on this item, please make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll close comment, public comment at 7:47, and move on to council comments. Todd?
Always good to work with partners and improve infrastructure, and I'm in favor of this.
Okay. Anne?
Yep, no, no comment. Thank you.
Brandy?
Well, I mean, you know, to the point that it's, it hasn't been done before, I do appreciate the fact that you were able to negotiate it for exactly what they paid for. And it's not like they're turning a profit on it. And it sounds like, you know, the, the permanent easement and the temporary easement, we got a good deal on those as well. So I appreciate the work on that.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, no, I'm, again, just, you know, I think it's needed. I'm supportive. Just, you know, I think it'd be great to, you know, maybe look at this further. I mean, I don't, if, if you have never done one, Chris, or haven't done one in a long time, that says something because you've been here a fair amount of years. So, again, appreciate your work on this.
Eric?
Said another way, you have a lot of experience. Thank you for your experience.
And Laura?
Thank you.
I will just point out that Core is a cooperative that, anybody that gets power from Core, that cooperative is run by the elected board. And I encourage you to reach out to the elected board and ask them why they are charging you to be partner to this discussion. So anyway, with that, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.651, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.651 on second reading.
Second. I have a motion from Wilks and a second from Hendricks. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Anne Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Next up in front of you is ordinance number 1.652 on second reading.
Move to approve ordinance number 1.652 on second reading.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Wilks, second from Hendricks. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Anne Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Next in front of you is item 6E, ballot questions for the special election. We are going to take these ones individually, I believe.
Yay.
And Kelsey will be presenting to us. First up is item 6E1, ordinance number 1.653 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the registered electors of the Town of Parker at the November 4th, 2025 special election to amend the Town of Parker Home Rule Charter, Section 2.8, titled Nomination Petition. Required signatures. Kelsey, take it away.
Sounds good. So before I jump into each of these ballot questions, I just want to give you a little background about the, the formatting, unless you want me to do that at the very end.
Do you want me to read all six into the record and then-
No, that's okay. It just-
No, let's do that.
Okay. Cool. So normally, when we do ballot questions, we have always done a black line. That means that we take the exact text, and then we will do strike-throughs for language we're getting rid of, and underlines for language that we're adding. This year, we're doing it a little different. We're doing questions that kind of summarize what the change would be. So I just wanted to get you all comfortable with that and kind of put you in that mindset as you consider these questions. The reason that we're doing that, there's a couple. One, we do think that it's more understandable for some of the questions, in particular 2.9, which we will cover on vacancies. The charter's written in legalese, like, it just is. So we felt like that was an easier way for the public to understand what the question was asking. And then also, Chris, our clerk, asked the, the county clerk what the cost would be if we did just the questions versus the questions in the black line. Doing the just question format is going to be approximately $60,700. If we added the black lines, that would put the cost up at over $100,000. So I just wanted to give you that background. But if that is something that you would like to discuss before we're done with all these items, we can certainly do that as well.
Can we, I've read the first ordinance into the record. Can we discuss the black lines now, or should we wait until the end?
Either actually works because the black lines is a concept, not specifically related. If you want it related to one of the specific items, then I'd wait to do it either during that or at the end.
No, I think it's, I think just real quick, I'll just, I'll just make a statement as this council knows. I was, maybe a couple of us, old guard, were apprehensive about not including the black lines, as to the point that's the way we've always done it. I sat down and educated myself with the town attorney. It's just not the same in this sense because we're not all, there's one for sure that we're definitely striking, that black line would be applicable, but there's a lot that is just not applicable. We're not, there's not a lot of black line to show. So thus, we have to show a lot of text to show what the black line is to make, to give it subject matter. You know, it's just one line or one word we're striking out, so you have to include the whole thing. So it gets very cost prohibitive and, and maybe not, not beneficial. So this council did come up with a compromise to, to put up a webpage and, and give all that information to the citizens that just will not be on each individual ballot. So I think that's where we're at. Mr. Dyak, anything to add on that?
I, I think you're the, I'm one of the old guard you were referring to, since we're the only two old guard people up here. No, I mean, I think, you know, I, I think in the past, we've had great success, I think, from a transparency standpoint. We've always, we've always sort of had the striking out to demonstrate what we've been doing. And, you know, from, from what I've been, what I've been told and what I've seen, is that has, that has created great success, at least from an understanding from the citizens and, you know, follow through with, you know, with a positive result at, at the, at the election. So again, I mean, I think I am, I don't like change a whole lot, but I'm willing to, to move forward and kind of, kind of see what happens with this and, and saving a bit of money. And let's see what happens.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Kelsey, take it away in the first ordinance, please.
All right.
None of us get to make comments, just John?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we can all make comments.
Is it questions or comments?
It's, it's, it's comments because there's not really a question presented. This is just about the black line aspect and what we've done in the past. I apologize. So we'll start with Brandy.
I just wanted to add that, you know, I know that we're not the only municipality that does it this way, where they don't do the black lines. We're not setting a precedent here. Am I- Am I, I'm assuming I'm correct in that based on all of our conversations.
Yes, there are many other municipalities that will often just do the questions, not necessarily the black lines. It's kind of all over the place. There, we've even seen it be very, very truncated. I think Long Ma in one of their recent elections was, they just had one question that said, do you want to approve the changes to X, Y, and Z sections? And they had a webpage and it passed, so it's, you know, the world is your oyster.
And I also wanted to add that this council had talked about also on top of a website, having something in physical form here at the clerk's office for the people that aren't as familiar with websites or aren't as comfortable with websites. They can still get an actual printed out explanation of the changes.
Correct. Should you approve any of the questions that we're presenting tonight? The strategy would be to have a webpage that shows the black line, the question, and has some information and then to have physical copies available at the clerk's office as well as, you know, talk of the town and, and our other information vehicles that we typically use to get the, the word out. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Anne?
Yeah, I, I mean, this council in no way is trying to not be transparent. I think we are just, we're trying to protect the taxpayers' dollars and, but I did have a question and I don't know if this is going to throw you for a loop and if it does, somebody just tell me to stop. Eric, can you put QR codes on a ballot?
No. I don't think so, Chris. I've never seen it done before. It's a fair question.
Never say never.
No, you'd have to take that up with the, the county clerk, I think, for that.
Could be an option at some point someday. Thank you.
Todd?
I'm good.
Laura?
I'm good, thank you.
Eric? Really nothing to add, but just to add something. Good lead in. No, and you know, I, I think that at no point are we pulling transparency away, we're just showing it in a different format, right? Just changing the, the avenue and how people can find that and it, it comes with, with some cost savings to the town, which we think is, is prudent.
Yes, that, that is the intention.
Excellent. All right. Everybody got their piece out? We're good? Kelsey?
Okay.
The first ordinance, please.
All right, so this first ordinance would address, it would add a new section 3.11 to the town's charter regarding multiple offices. So currently, under our code, there is no prohibition against elected officials holding more than one. Oh, yes?
That's a different one.
Oh, my apologies, I had that, sorry, you said 2.9?
2.8.
2.8, there it is. Okay, sorry about that, had my stuff out of order. 2.8 regards the nomination petition and the signatures required for town council. So currently, the charter only requires 25 signatures on the nomination petition for any individual who wishes to run for the office of mayor or town council member. This section amendment would increase that number to 75.
Short and to the point. We'll open it up for comments to staff. Laura?
No comments to staff.
Questions, sorry. Questions to staff. Apologies.
No questions.
No questions.
Eric has no questions. John, questions?
I have no questions, but Eric, are you sure you have no questions?
I'll let Josh ask.
Okay, thank you.
Wow. Brandy, questions for staff regarding this one?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Anne, any questions?
I'll save it for comments, thanks.
And Todd?
Eric, are you, I'm sorry, I'm, no questions.
Thank you. And if there is a, we'll open up public comment at 7:57. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to address counsel on this specific ordinance, this is a question requiring, changing the required signatures from 25 to 75. Anybody from the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:57 and move on to comments. Oh, where to start? Laura?
So my thoughts are a little complex on this. I'd just like to start off by saying a couple of years ago, we have position, we as an elected body had position overviews for the town of Parker for the position of mayor and town council. And I will say that this was a strong initiation on my part to have a two-page written position overview and council did agree, the mayor did agree, along with the town manager providing input and the town attorney. We do have two pages that goes over holding office, position duties, meetings, meeting preparation, strategic planning, community engagement, time commitment, and compensation. And so my thoughts, and I understand there's going to be differing opinions up here tonight, is that folks that choose to run for town council have an adequate vehicle, they have the information in that position overview, and they understand what the job involves. And so it's more than 20 hours a week. It is compensated through a stipend, but it actually does take up quite a lot of time and effort. It is not just coming in two Mondays a month or four Mondays a month and showing up for a meeting. It actually is a big time commitment. And you hear that time commitment when we are up here every week about the different things that we're doing, the different liaisons we sit on, the ribbon cuttings and engagement with the community and meeting with a whole host of individuals in the community. And so our town clerk does a phenomenal job with running this entire election process along with the mayor. And so my point is, right now, it's 25 votes, 25 signatures to get on the ballot. And you'd go to your neighbors and you ask them to get on the ballot. And I believe it's good to get to know your neighbors to get on the ballot because I have done that twice so far. I am right now currently in favor of keeping this at 25 signatures to get on the ballot. I do not hold, I hold this position and I respect the position of my fellow town council members on this that may disagree with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Todd?
Yeah, I believe the 25 signatures was introduced in 1981 and population then was 200, 300 citizens and now we're at 68,000. And so I, I think it should change as needed and I'm, I'm in favor of 75. It's, it's not that much of a bigger ask, but in my opinion, this is, this is an important position to run and I think greater representation by getting more signatures and putting more effort into it and really wanting this position, 50 more signatures is not that big of an ask and it's really, in my mind, an update of just the realities of the population of Parker in 2025 versus 1981. So I'm in favor.
Thank you. Eric?
Caught me off guard, I was already in.
You get.
Are you asking me if I have a question?
You have a, no, no questions, please. Comments?
Yeah, so, you know, I'm, I'm of the opinion, right, you know, 1984, we established, just to clarify, it was 1984, town was established, set this, set this ordinance that you needed 25 signatories to get on a ballot. That's 9% of the population at the time. You know, fast forward to now, we've got nearly 70,000 people, that same amount of signatures at a 9% is, is over 6,000. You know, changing or establishing a, a number that's, while it's not 6,000, it's, it's more reasonable than 25, you're, you're protecting some of the integrity of the position. You, you are making it more difficult for people serving currently. You know, this isn't a barrier for, for somebody to come in and do this, this is changing in place what's, what's already here. But, you know, I do believe it's, this is an appropriate update and I'm in support.
Thank you. Anne?
So, yeah, we're, I don't think that by approving this, we, we're not trying to exclude anyone. I think we're raising the bar just high enough to say that, you know, this matters. And the best part still is, is the voters are going to decide. If they disagree, they can vote it down. And three of us up here are going to be running again, so we're going to be out there, you know, having to get more signatures as well. So we're not asking anyone to do anything that we personally wouldn't do. And to be honest, you can collect 25 signatures in less than an hour without having to, to really understand, I think, what, what you're, what you're doing. That's just my opinion and I, I am in support of this, so.
Thank you. John?
I see the pattern here. No, I mean, you know, to me, I think during our discussion, I, I thought the 25 signatures, correct me, I think by the town clerk, Chris, that's more of a state thing? Is that a minimum state standard?
It varies.
It varies? Okay. You know, our, our discussions obviously were, were a little spirited and we were, we were going through all the what ifs and we have different perspectives. You know, the, the, the 25 signatures, again, I don't, I don't know if that's the right, the right number or not. You know, I think there was sort of a discussion point, let's, let's make it higher. We went through a, more of an abbreviated conversation on how do we do a percentages or numbers? You know, if we were to in fact get there, what is, what is the right number? As council member Franzen indicated, you know, he made an analogy that 9% based in 84 was a certain amount and you extrapolate that out. I don't, I don't know if that would, if that would be the number, if you will, because that's a, that's a big number. I certainly do not want to be restrictive to people who want to enter service to their community and that, that we're, we're more of a low foundational level here. So I, I want to encourage people and I certainly respect the opinions of my other council members, but if we're going to do this, you know, my, my thought is we, we do it right. I don't know what the right number is. We, we talked about certain things and I think a lot of it was should we or shouldn't we? Once we got over the, we are going to, the, the discussion on, on number 75 or 25 or, or more really was, was not, not to the point where I, I felt comfortable. So for me, I understand the trajectory, I understand the thought. I just cannot support this question. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandy?
So I had to write this up because I want to make sure I got all my words out the right way. We've never been in a shortage of people who want to run for these positions, so I'm not worried about that. But raising the number of signatures required to run from 25 to 75, it's a proactive step to strengthen our local democracy. The change ensures that candidates have a genuine support from a broader base of the community before appearing on the ballot. We all are at large and to my fellow council members' points, we're almost at 70,000 people. So this gives us a broader base of the community's support. By head, setting the higher threshold, we help ensure that those seeking office are truly committed and have taken the time to engage with more than just their neighbors. So I am in support of this.
Thank you. I'll say my piece. I think you guys know and I'll let the public know where I stand from right at the start, the top, I'm, I'm against this. I think that, you know, what you'll notice here in the difference as we go through the, the next five, but including these six questions, is the next five are operational in nature. They change what we do as a town, what we do as a, as a body, what the departments do to, to give you the town that you, you know and love. This question is not. This question changes how we pick our electors. And it's just, it's, it's very hard for me, it always has been fundamentally, to get over the ethical question I have, is it right for an elected body to make it harder for someone else to be a member of that elected body? And I know that, that three of these folks next to me are going to, are going to be up this year, so they'll be part of that. And I know that, you know, you can ask former Mayor Toburg, I, I pulled a petition and an hour later, I turned that petition in full. I do know those people. I do know 40 people that can come meet me real quick and sign that petition. I'm at an advantage. I know a lot of people in this town, I've been in this town for a long time. But what about the 18-year-old kid that wants to run for office? We had one. Jiva ran a while back. She didn't know a lot of people, but she ran because she can get on the ballot and she can run. What about the senior citizen that's upset by the stop sign that we put in? And he just wants to do something and he wants to run for office. I believe it's his right to run for office and we shouldn't hinder that right by arbitrarily choosing a number of 75. I think the point that, that John was asking, 25 had no relation with the former population. 25 was a number that was found in a statute somewhere. It wasn't a percentage of population, it was nothing to do with the 285 original founders of this community. It just simply was the base number that they stuck with. And, and so to then arbitrarily choose 75 on such a hard and important question, I, I have a sincere problem with. I think that if this council wants to explore, you know, the realm of, of what qualifications it takes to be sitting up here, then you should go out and form a commission and get those people to ask those questions and look around and, and, and do the work and find out what the norm is and find out what the percentages are, but not just to debate in a room and decide that this is what it takes to get elected to this office. I've heard a lot about it's too easy. It should be easy. It should be very easy to run for office. It shouldn't be hard. And it should, ultimately, in the situation, the citizen should decide who is going to be elected into this office, regardless if there's six, none, or 100 people on the ballot, it's ultimately up to the citizen to decide and to, to say it's too easy to get on and we've had too many people run. And that wasn't said tonight, but that has been in discussion points in the past and that, that worries me. Ultimately, it's up to the citizens, no matter how many people are on the ballot and how they got on the ballot, it's up to them to choose their representatives in this, in this form of government. I strongly urge you to slow down. There are, there are a few different things here you guys can do. Obviously, a 3-3 vote will kill this bill. You could, I would entertain a motion to postpone until a date uncertain, that also would kill this bill. And then you could obviously, you know, I would entertain a motion and you guys could vote to approve, or I would entertain a motion that you guys vote no, or, or to kill this bill. So there's, there's a lot of options here. I urge you to, to ponder and, and, and ask yourselves what you're really after here. Is this something that the citizens are asking? I know that there's been talk about it hubbub here, but have you taken a qualified slice of what the citizens want? Do they want their government to make it harder to sit up here and represent them? You haven't asked that question yet. And maybe that's what you think you're going to do by going out with this question, but I think that what you're going to do is cause the citizens to revolt, as we saw with Douglas County and their home rule and even as our governor saw with his bridge to nowhere. You know, the citizens, when you don't inform them, they make decisions and that decision is no. We have five other pertinent questions, in my opinion, that are at risk because this question's going to be on the ballot and you're going to get citizens that are defensive, especially after what Douglas County ran. So I, I urge you to take a pause on this ordinance, take a pause on this question, come back to the drawing board in '26 or even '27 with a well-thought-out question that has citizen input or a, a council-appointed citizen commission. That's, that's my, my statement tonight. And with that, I'll open up a further discussion. Todd?
I have nothing.
Anne?
Hey, I appreciate your thoughts and the open discussion and, and I truly believe that we all get to have an opinion up here and we're all up here to represent the people. Having said that, we're not unilaterally deciding this. It is still going to the vote of, of the people. If they don't think that we need to have 75 names, then, then I still believe that that's up to the people to decide. But again, we're not just making this decision without letting everyone else think it through.
Thank you. Brandy?
Yeah, so despite what some opinions may be, there was a lot of research done outside of these four walls and outside of this council. There was research done on the staff's part on what other municipalities across the state go, and to our town clerk's point, it varies. Some of them are 200, some of them are 100, some of them are 25, some of them are 75. It is all over the state. It's not like Parker would be the only municipality to go above 25, so I just want to state that. And as far as talking to the citizens, I can't speak for other council members, I can only speak for myself, and I have been doing the legwork. I've been doing the legwork on this for over a year now, talking to people and getting their opinions and seeing what it takes. And seeing as my grandfather was one of the original 251 people in the town of Parker, I can attest that I really do care about Parker and the people that run this town and looking forward to our future for the other people. I am a third generation, I hold that proudly, and so when it comes to what the people want and slowing down and getting their opinions on things, I myself can say I have done that legwork and I have done my due diligence and I stand by this.
Thank you. John?
I don't think I have anything to add. I mean, I spoke and, you know, you spoke as well, and I think I'm just appreciative of having a voice in this matter.
Eric?
Yeah, you know, likewise, you know, there's been a lot of discussion on this point specifically, right? And we're hearing a lot of differing opinions on why, how, you know, I think, you know, I know I was a fence sitter for quite a while and I still kind of waver back and forth, right? I think everybody brings up a really valid point. You know, there's two really strong sides to this and, you know, I guess I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. Laura?
Just, again, to the position itself, I think our informational meetings are run great by our mayor and our town clerk and any town council member that's also appointed. We put out great information on how to run for local office, but I would like to say, I'd like to reiterate that anyone who does run, you can't zoom these meetings in and have that count as a vote. You do have to be here. And there is, again, a two-page informational sheet that goes over the duties and responsibilities, and our town clerk does a wonderful job of putting out this information in a packet every time we have an election for town council or mayor. And so we do have different thoughts on this matter, and if it does make the ballot, then the citizens of Parker will decide this.
Thank you. With that, council, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.653 on second reading.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion from Wilks and a second from Barrington. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Hi.
Dyak?
No.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
No.
And let the record show that passed 4 to 2. Council, I have something to read into the record. Under section 4.1 of the Charter and 2.02.010 of the Town Municipal Code, the mayor is a presiding officer of this council and generally has no vote on items that come before this council. However, the mayor is granted the authority to veto any ordinance or resolution passed by this council. This is not a power to be taken lightly or used recklessly. Colorado Springs Mayor Yemi Mobo-Lade wrote an opinion piece in the Colorado Springs Gazette dated July 13th of this year. In it, he said, "As a mayor, one of the most serious tools entrusted to me is the power of the veto. I don't use it lightly and never for political theater, but it exists for a reason to ensure that when policy decisions significantly impacting the direction of our city, we have a moment to pause, reflect, and ask a critical question. Is this truly the best in the long-term interest of our residents? Not everyone is going to be happy with all the decisions made by this or any council, and we understand there will always be people who disagree with decisions made. However, I believe that the members of this council, myself included, truly care about this town and all of its residents. We work very hard to be responsive to our citizens and attain much information as we can make, as much information as we can, to make the best decisions for this council, or for this town, excuse me, and the people who live, work, and play here. While I truly respect town council members and their unique opinions, this is one issue where I believe it is appropriate to exercise the veto power. When it comes to how our resident and registered elector of this town can become a candidate for town council position, I believe that this is one of the most important aspects of our charter. How does our community pick its representative? My opinion, and what I believe to be the opinion of the majority of these people in this community, is that we, as a council, should not hinder a citizen's ability to run for office." Again, I give you the examples of the teenager, the senior citizen that doesn't know 13 people, and just to make it harder for somebody to pull a petition, to even think about running, just to put that roadblock up in the beginning, I just truly believe it's not the right decision. Ultimately, the selection of representatives should be on that beautiful Tuesday in November and not partially chosen by roadblocks an elected body throws up. Because of these reasons, and with all due respect and appreciation for my fellow council members, I believe it is my duty and obligation to the residents of this town to exercise my authority under the town's charter and municipal code and veto ordinance number 1.653.
Wow.
And if we could, I'll take a recess. This is a tight group and there are decisions we have to make, so it's a decision I made and I stated my reasons why. So with that, we're out of recess and back on, and I put away my agenda. Council, next up in front of you is item E2, ordinance number 1.654 on second reading. A bill for an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the registered electors of the town of Parker at the November 4th, 2025 special election to amend the Town Parker Home Rule Charter, section 2.9, titled Vacancies. Kelsey, please.
All right, so this is the reason that we are doing the new ballot question, because this one got a little complicated. Section 2.9 addresses when a vacancy occurs in the position of either the mayor or town council members. It lists about eight different circumstances. That would be, you know, if you moved out of town or you couldn't perform the duties of your office. So the first thing this would do is add a new circumstance, and we'll talk about this a little bit more with section 3.11 that I got ahead of myself on. And it would be if the mayor or a town council member were elected to or appointed to another elected or partisan position. So this would essentially give teeth to new section 3.11 that we'll talk about. The reason that we would want to create this vacancy is it's actually very common at the state and the federal level and even at some other municipal or local levels to prohibit multiple office holding. This is because you don't want your elected officials to have divided loyalty. So if you had a town council member who was also a Douglas County Commissioner, for example, and we were dealing with an IGA for flashing beacons, how would you know who they're representing when they're up on that dais? That's the theory behind that. Also, under the Charter, council is nonpartisan, so if you had a council member that was running for or appointed to a partisan position, then that kind of pulls back the veil on their political leanings and it would taint that nonpartisan character of council. So the first part would be to add a vacancy upon the assumption of that elected or partisan position. The second point, which is very important, I'm sure near and dear to your hearts after last November, is the process to fill a vacancy. So currently, when a vacancy happens, within between 10 and 30 days after that vacancy occurs, you have to meet to either call a special election or decide to appoint somebody. This can be really tough in November because of the holidays. It's tough because you have a weird 10-day buffer, and so you essentially have 20 days to make a really big decision about who is going to sit in one of those seats. So what this would do is it would extend out that timeline to give you time to meet and consider what process you want to go through, allow potential applicants, if you go through an appointment process, to have time to fill out the application, talk to their employers and their families, and figure out if this is something they want to do. And just make sure that we can have a good, transparent, full process without it being so short. So that is what this question would do. Any questions?
Thank you, Kelsey. We'll start with Laura, please.
No questions, I'll save my comments. Thank you.
Eric, questions?
What was the timeline? You're saying we're going to extend the timeline? Can you tell us what that timeline is to fill a vacancy?
Yeah, Jamie, do you have that black line? I want to say it was 90 days to meet and decide on a special election, and then I think it's like 150 days if you do call a special election.
So we're moving the number of days for an eligible person to fill the vacancy from 30 to 45. If no appointments made within 45 days, then we, council can vote to call a special election and no more than 75 days. Then the special election will have to be held within 120 days of when it's called.
So we're moving it from 30 to 45 days, correct, on the front end to make an appointment?
For the appointment, correct.
Thank you.
John?
Brandy?
No questions.
Anne?
No questions, thanks.
No questions.
Just real quick, can we talk about, you've hinted at it, talk about what happened after the last election and that crunch time that would happen to be the very busy month of December?
It was challenging. I mean, Jamie can probably speak to it a bit more than me, but there is a lot of schedule wrangling. You have to schedule special meetings that might occur in the middle of the day, so you kind of limit the ability of the public to be involved in this process. There was a lot of scrambling. I mean, Eric, I think you had a hard time getting ahold of your employer because of the holidays, right? To figure out if they were okay?
I was going to wait that for my comment section, but that is correct.
So it's just like, it's this crazy process, and then for whatever reason, you have to wait for those 10 days, so you're losing that time, so you just really have 20 days, hypothetically, the busiest time of the year because we're all, you know, going back to see family and we've got holiday obligations to make a huge decision. Jamie, anything to add?
I mean, there's really not much to add. I know it was chaotic for all of you. We were working around holidays and schedules and vacations. That 10-day buffer is quite odd. I think we advertised ahead of time, but we couldn't start reviewing and going through the potential appointment process. We had meetings because they had to be announced and because we had to have agendas. I think we had a meeting the day after Christmas, and so everybody was scrambling to come together and, you know, it ended up a great process this time, but we want to make sure we have time to ensure it's a great process every time.
The unique situation happened because in November, it was election, I vacated my council seat and took this chair. That happens usually by Charter, I believe, about the second Monday or third Monday, no, second Monday in December. So we have only a certain short timeframe, 30 days after that Monday, when a seat is taken, to then answer that. Otherwise, it automatically goes to an expensive election, correct?
That is correct.
I'm sorry, I should be looking at Kelsey.
Either side.
Correct, Kelsey?
Yes.
Okay, so that's why we're doing this tonight. I guess that's the big question. Any other questions for Carolyn or for Steph, or Kelsey?
One question, sorry. You didn't ask me again.
Sorry.
I'm taking it again. What would have been the cost of a special election just this most recent time?
It depends. So if we coordinate with the county, it can be quite a bit less expensive. If we do it on our own, it can be quite expensive, Chris. I mean, do you have an estimate?
Voting machines, you have to hire election judges, that kind of thing, so it is a little more expensive. The other thing is if the county is in a position to help us out, they're willing to help, but if they're not, if it's a wrong time of year, then they won't help.
So we could be placing more financial burden on the taxpayers because of potentially unfilled appointment?
Correct.
Thank you. With that, we'll open up public comment on this item, vacancies at 8:29. Anybody from the public wishing to address council on vacancies and the question on the ballot? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:29 and go back for comments. Todd, please.
Yeah, just, we lived this not that long ago and it makes total sense to me. Get a little buffer, give us time, do our due diligence, and obviously the holidays and people could be out of town, and definitely, I think this is a no-brainer, so I'm in support.
Thank you, Todd. Anne?
Yeah, unfortunately, elections happen in November, right in the thick of it, so I think that this just gives everyone a little bit of breathing room.
Thank you, Anne. Brandy?
Yeah, as much as I loved seeing everybody multiple times over the Christmas break, I would like to have a little bit more time in there if and when we come to a position of having to appoint another council member. So I appreciate the work on this.
Thank you, Brandy. John?
Yes, Councilmember Barrington said elections happen in November, but swearing-ins happening in December, and I think that's the struggle with this. I've been through this a few times as a result of an election, and, you know, it's always challenging because we need to work in the best interest of the town to go through the process, try to figure out if we can create an appointment, otherwise it goes to election. Obviously, people in that timeframe are thinking about other things, family, holidays, and we just want to make sure that we give future councils or the electorate to give us the ability to have future councils have a little bit of space so they can have a good process instead of giving potential candidates deadlines of less than 24 hours to get back to us to see if they could accept or not. Thank you.
Eric?
I feel like you're talking about me. No, you know, I think a couple important points, you know, this isn't, we have to come to a consensus on an appointee, and if we don't, it goes to a special election. So there's not a given that they're going to select an appointee or we're going to select an appointee, but I think an even more important aspect, right, was the notice comes out and applications were maybe two weeks, they were due in full two weeks ahead of time, and they were lengthy. There was also interviews, and, you know, where we came up to a deadline is, you know, we held interviews and an offer was made, I didn't have enough time to clear that with my employer, right? I had to clear, and so we were running up against a timeline for me where, like, I didn't have the time, so I really had to lean on my employer in an unnecessary way to help make a decision quicker than, you know, than was needed. And if I couldn't have made a decision, it would have gone to a special election. So that's it.
Thank you, Eric. Laura?
Just to reiterate, when a vacancy occurs, I believe most town councils in Douglas County and other counties have the ability to either hold an appointment process or go right to a special election. So this is not an unusual process at all by any means. You can look this up in Douglas County, Arapahoe County, any other county in Colorado, and also the state legislature as well. So affording a little bit more time for this process is quite common sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. With that, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.654 on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.654 on second reading.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Hendricks and a second from Franzen. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Hi.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have ordinance 1.655 on second reading. A bill for an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the registered electors of the town of Parker at the November 4th, 2025 special election to amend the Town of Parker Home Rule Charter, section 3.4. This ordinance is titled Conflict of Interest. Kelsey?
All right, so section 3.4 is your conflict of interest section of the Charter. This prohibits council members from voting on any matter in which they have a conflict of interest. You normally will see this if you have a financial or personal stake in the matter on which you're voting. So the interesting thing is, this does not specifically mention the mayor. We think this is because, back in the day, Parker originally had a strong mayor form of government. That would mean that the mayor was a full voting member of council, instead of, you know, the separate, quasi-separate position he holds now. After the town was incorporated, the voters did decide to move to a council manager form of government, which we have now. This means that the mayor now is able to break ties in case of a tie vote, veto, but not act as a full voting member. So we think that potentially, when this was drafted, it was intended to also cover the mayor and then just wasn't ever updated, but we felt like it was probably a good thing to make sure that all the council members and the mayor were covered by the conflict of interest provisions.
Thank you, Kelsey. Questions? Laura?
Thank you for this catch. Thank you.
Nothing to add.
John?
Nothing, thank you.
Questions? Brandy?
Nope.
Anne? Todd? Seeing no questions, we'll open up a public comment, glasses on and off, at 8:34 PM. Any members of the audience willing or wanting to address council on this item, conflict of interest of the mayor? None? We'll close public comment at 8:35 and move back for council for comments. Todd?
Pretty straightforward. I'm in support.
Anne?
Yeah, I think it was a good catch, and it's a cleanup that needed to happen. Thank you.
Brandy?
Yeah, for levels of transparency, the mayor should be held to the same standards that council is.
She says that with... John?
I don't think I can repackage those in something new and evolutionary, so I'll just say no comments.
Eric?
Ditto.
And Laura?
No comment, thank you.
And I think my comment is it's implied that the mayor is a member of the council, yet there are some spaces within our charter where it's questionable, and I think that this council, and specifically me, are hoping to clarify that for the citizens. So with that, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.655, please.
Move to approve ordinance number 1.655 on second reading.
I have a motion from Hendricks. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Franzen. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Next up, we have ordinance 1.656 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the registered electors of the Town of Parker at the November 4th, 2025 special election to amend the Town of Parker Home Rule Charter, Section 6.2. This is titled Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Kelsey, please.
Okay, so the Board of Adjustment. We have what's called a Board of Adjustment. This is intended to hear and determine appeals from our refusal of building permits, violations of zoning ordinances, and to make exceptions to our zoning regulations. Guess how many times that we've had to convene this board in the last 15 years? If you guessed zero, you would be correct. We, our staff does such a great job. If anyone has an issue, especially with our building code, that they're usually able to work those out. It, it's another one of those cleanup items. We, you know, we felt that it was an unnecessary commission to have, although our proposal would be, instead of just appointing people to this essentially zombie commission that has not had any reason to meet in over a decade, we would transfer those powers to the, the Planning Commission, which already does hear other sort of land use and, and zoning matters. And so we would be able to train them up, make sure that citizens still have these rights, but just move them into an existing active commission instead of one that is required by the charter but does not otherwise have a reason to convene.
Thank you. Questions for council? I'm sorry, for council. For Kelsey. Todd?
No questions.
Ann?
So currently, no one sits on this board or commission?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay. All right.
Brandy?
What happens if this doesn't pass the vote of the people?
Um, hypothetically, I mean, we would need to appoint people to this commission. We could always try to do it ad hoc. We could try and pass an ordinance that, I guess, sort of merges the two, Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. So there are options to get around it. We just thought it would be more transparent and clear if people knew that they would need to go to Planning Commission, essentially.
John?
Yeah, and cleanup's always good. And if, if we can get this taken care of, I think it'd be great.
Eric?
So the Planning Commission's, the Planning Commissioner's title is going to remain the same. It will just have another layer of duties assigned if needed?
Correct.
Which we haven't needed in 15 years.
No.
Thank you.
Laura?
No comment.
Questions, though?
Nope. No questions.
My question is, and it could be read, we're taking away the citizens' right for checks and balances, if you will, but we're not. We're just transferring that to the existing and very active Planning Commission, correct?
Correct. And it's hard because you can't explain that necessarily in the ballot question, but on the webpage, we would explain, we're just taking these duties from the charter and we're putting them in the Planning Commission in ordinance.
So this would be one of those questions where maybe the old guard said, we have to have black lines, but that couldn't be really done, could it?
Even with a black line, it would just strike it out. So, you know, it's, it's helpful to have that context with the webpage.
Excellent. Thank you. Without any other questions from council, we'll open a public comment at 8:39. Any member of the public wishing to address counsel on this specific item, make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:39 and then go back to council for comments. Laura?
This is truly a cleanup provision. While this commission exists on paper, it has not operated on paper at all, with zero citizens coming forward in the last 15 years. The citizens are not losing their ability to complain or petition to the town in any way that is going to the Planning Commission. So I am satisfied that the citizens will still exercise every right within the Town of Parker to complain or advocate on their behalf to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Eric?
That was really well said. Yeah, you know, citizens are not losing any, any rights here. We're just, we're realigning a, a board so, so that we have someplace to go if, if this comes up.
Thank you, Eric. John?
Uh, yeah, I think I made my comments in the questions section. The only thing that would be really great right now, if Jamie told me I didn't open a public meeting, which would kind of create the full circle, but that's not applicable. So supportive of this item, again, as to what everybody has said, again, that this is just cleanup and supportive.
Thank you, John. Brandy?
Should we pause so you can do a public meeting?
No.
No.
He's talking about when he was sitting here with my absence.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Yeah. No, 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 no. It's just...
No, I mean, the citizens aren't losing anything because we haven't had it and we haven't had a need for it. So if anything, we're actually giving the citizens power because if they were to come and appeal right now, we don't have a board. We don't have that. So by giving it over to our staff and our administration level, I think it actually gives the citizens more power if there is something that they need to appeal. So thank you.
Ann?
Yeah, I think it's just, again, I can't say it any better than anyone else has, has said it. Just, just some housekeeping. Thanks.
And Todd?
Yeah, I'm just thrilled you mentioned zombie. So thank you.
It is almost Halloween.
Crazy.
With that, I would entertain a
Zombie board.
Motion on item, ordinance number 1.65 second, no, I'm sorry, on 1.656, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.656 on second reading.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
I have a motion from Barrington and a second from Hefta. Todd?
Brains.
Yes. Ann?
Yes.
Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next up, we have ordinance number 1.65 second on second, 657 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the registered electors of the Town of Parker at the November 4th, 2025 special election to amend the Town of Parker Home Rule Charter, Section 15.6, titled Contracts and Other Governmental Entities. Kelsey?
Okay, so 15.6 is another one that we would recommend repealing altogether. It recommends that all intergovernmental agreements be approved by ordinance. This requires two readings, which requires at least a month of time. This is an incredibly inefficient way to do business. As we, it's kind of been the theme of the evening, we have grown significantly from a town of about 285 to almost 70,000. So we need to be able to keep up with our business partners. We need to be able to move contracts through. And having that month-long gap just to consider something on two readings, it's a bit of a waste of time. There are definitely ways that you can still consider these contracts should you choose to, whether by resolution, along with other contracts that you see that are above a certain dollar threshold. But it's really just one of those, we're trying to modernize for the 21st century so that we are not lagging behind and trying to provide services for our citizens.
Thank you, Kelsey. Todd, any questions?
No questions.
Ann?
No questions. Thank you.
Brandy, questions?
No, no, thank you.
John?
No questions.
Eric?
First set of questions or second?
First set, please.
Just making sure. Other municipalities, are they doing both first and second readings? Or how are other municipalities dealing with this?
I am not aware of a lot that do it by ordinance. Ordinances are usually for enacting laws. Where I've seen IGAs approved, it's either been treated as any other contract, so it can just be approved on consent, or, you know, so above a certain dollar threshold like you do with your construction contracts, for example. I've also seen by resolution. But ordinance is, I think, fairly unusual for contract approvals.
And is there a certain dollar threshold where it would, would come to us, I guess, not outside of an ordinance?
You always see contracts that are above $100,000. And then on regular agenda, it's above 500.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Laura?
No questions.
Excellent. With that, we'll open public comment at 8:44. Any member of the public wishing to ask counsel on this specific question, please make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:45 and go back for comments. Todd, any comments?
No, this makes perfect sense. I'm in support.
Ann?
Nope. Thank you.
Brandy?
No comments. Thank you.
John?
Nope. No, thank you.
Eric?
No comments.
And Laura?
Yes, I comment. Intergovernmental agency agreements are between two governmental entities. Let's take the Town of Parker's Engineering Department and Douglas County's Engineering Department. And say that they had to pay for something between them on existing land or property, or negotiate items between them as a Town of Parker and Douglas County. In this particular circumstance, those two entities are going to come together and do the negotiating. And then they're going to come before us. And they are the experts at what they're doing in these, these contracts. We will see contracts above $100,000. We can always pull an item off the consent agenda, but they are the experts. This is not the realm of elected officials in intergovernmental agreements. It takes attorneys, experts, specialists to negotiate these contracts between two government entities. And so I support this issue.
Thank you, Laura. With that, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.65 second on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.657 on second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Hefta and a second from Hendricks. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Next up is the last question for the citizens, item number six, 6.6, ordinance number 1.658 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the registered electors of the Town of Parker at the November 4th, 2025 special election to amend the Town of Parker Home Rule Charter by the addition of a new section, 3.11, titled Municipal Multiple Offices. Kelsey?
All right. Now we're going to talk about Section 3.11. I had my list backwards. So this section, like we talked about with the vacancy question, Section 2.9, would prohibit the mayor and all town council members from serving in more than one elected or partisan position at the same time. We talked about this is because, one, council is supposed to be nonpartisan, so we want to make sure that we don't accidentally taint that by having people serve in other partisan offices if they run with a party, for example. And then the second one is that question of divided loyalty. There is some case law, some legal doctrine saying that it, it's really inappropriate for elected officials to hold more than one office where they might have a conflict of interest because you're not really sure who they're representing when they are making a vote, if they potentially have both of their bodies' interests at stake in that vote. This is prohibited at the federal level, at the state level, and some of our local municipalities also prohibit this. So this would bring us in line with good governance practices to make sure that the people who are sitting at that dais are truly committed to just the citizens at the time.
Thank you, Kelsey. We'll start with questions, Laura?
No questions.
Eric, any questions?
No questions.
John?
So, so is this like HOA board as well as like a council position? Or I'm just seeking clarification.
Jamie, what, what would you say for HOA?
Probably not HOA, but Metro District would apply.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Brandy?
No questions.
Ann?
No questions. Thank you.
And Todd?
About certain zombie board?
Is it partisan?
Sure.
Then no.
Dang it.
Oh, then I do have a question.
I'm sorry. Brandy, please.
What if it's another nonpartisan position?
If it's nonpartisan, well, okay, so if it's elected, like, again, like a Metro District, but it's nonpartisan, probably not okay. If it's like an election to your local Chamber of Commerce, maybe okay. I think that we would probably put some guidelines together about that to provide some clarity.
I agree. I think things like boards that you all serve on in your personal capacities and things like that generally would not apply to this. But something like a Metro District, because it is a quasi-governmental entity and that's a formal election, but for different personal organizations that you're parts of, it would not apply.
Or CML.
Correct, or CML.
CML is a good example. It's an election, but it's not, it's a, it's not a formal government.
The, the intention is to target things like the county commissioner's seats, state representative office, you know, things like that that are truly political in nature.
Yes, please. Question?
I guess another, sometimes the town might give funding to an organization, so it could be a conflict of interest for us to then have to vote on funding for that.
Yeah, so let's say that you were on the Board of the Chamber and you, you know, wanted to negotiate like a grant agreement or some sort of funding agreement for the town. We would probably talk to you behind closed doors in exact session about that conflict and whether that would make you recuse yourself.
Thank you.
Brandy, were you done?
Done. Questions? Yes.
Laura?
Okay. Laura? Just to clarify, we are also talking about special districts, the fire district, the school board election, that kind of thing as well, where you, you actually have to go out and get elected and get on a ballot. We wouldn't want somebody sitting on the school board and also sitting on town council. Is that correct?
Correct. I think that would be prohibited under this question.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kelsey? Seeing none, we'll open public comment at 8:51. Any members of the audience wishing to address counsel on this item, make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:51 and go back for comments from council. Todd?
Again, I think another no-brainer. Hey, zombie reference. Anyway, in my mind, if you're elected for a position, you're 100% dedicated to that position, and I'm supportive of this.
Thank you, Todd. Ann?
I agree. No further comment.
Brandy?
This is actually where I'm probably going to differ from my fellow council. So I personally feel like we cannot and should not restrict any individual from serving in multiple offices if they are duly elected or appointed. To do so would infringe on the democratic choice and the right for the people to have their preferred representatives. At this time, it's not our role to create unnecessary barriers that make it harder for qualified individuals to hold a public office, to quote our mayor a little earlier. Our job is to uphold access, fairness, and trust, not to limit it. And for an example, if I wanted to serve on our school board, because I'm very dedicated to my children's school and to our school district, that doesn't, in my opinion, directly interfere with the Town of Parker because we don't fund the school district, we don't have a say over the school district. And I don't think it's our job to make it harder if people are wanting to be appointed or elected to multiple positions.
Thank you. Brandy? John?
Yeah, um, you know, I think taking on a commitment such as an elected position, Town of Parker, I didn't quite realize what I was getting myself into. As you, as you get into it, there's, there's a number of boards and plenty of work to do in one elected position. If, if you go out for another one, it, I don't know to the point, I don't know how you, how you do that. And so to me, it's, if, if you focus on one thing, I, I think there's plenty, plenty to do. And your, your passion, your focus, your drive should be focused on that initial commitment to that, that elected office. You know, I, I think we, as elected people up here, we get involved in a number of things, always very passionate about serving our community. You know, I think as, as you conclude your, your obligation and commitment to one, a new door could potentially open and, and bring you and your, your knowledge and your history within the community to that other elected position. So I'd be supportive of this.
Thank you. Eric?
Nothing to add. I am supportive of it.
Thank you. Laura?
Having just been on a ballot a couple of months ago for a charter commission for the county board commissioners, for the charter commission that did not pass, in retrospect, I, I realized and I looked at, looked the level of involvement, had that gone through, that it would have taken for me to sit on that charter commission, even though I was asked and encouraged to, to be on the ballot for that. I do think it, it takes all your energy. We, as human beings, we have families. We run a household. We're taking care of children or elderly parents. And it, it takes a lot to serve, to do a full-time job and then to come here and also do an elected position. Again, I respect any dissent on, on this matter because ultimately, the citizens of Parker will decide this. And so it does take a lot of energy to be an elected official in general. And then to add another position on top of that takes even more energy. And I will tell you personally, I've had a lot of energy in my lifetime. I might be slowing down a little bit right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. With that, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.658, please, on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.658 on second reading.
Second?
I have a motion from Hendricks and a second from Franzen. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
No.
And Dyak?
Yes.
And Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
Let the record show that that passed 5-1, please. Next up, I didn't, or, I'm sorry, I didn't, I had a number seven, Contracts Over 500,000, 7A, Chambers Road and Stroh Road Traffic Signal, CIP 24-034. Mr. Hudson again. Appreciate your patience, Chris. Thanks for sticking around. Not that you had a choice, but thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, you have a contract in front of you for award for the Chambers Road Stroh Road Traffic Signal, CIP 2434 vicinity map. As you guys know, we just opened this road very recently to traffic. It's south of Hess Road, and there's a new intersection open to the tra- It's south of Hess Road, and there's a new intersection open to the traffic and public. We advertised this back in June. We opened bids on July 22nd. We received four responsive bids from 606,000 up to $754,000. Lowest responsible bidder was Adiona Transportation Solutions. Adiona is currently a subcontractor on the Lincoln Avenue whitening project, and they're also under contract to do the Pine Drive Somerset Traffic Signal that was awarded earlier this year. So they're in good standing with us, and we want to move forward with them. Recommended award tonight, notice to proceed to be roughly a month away, and this construction will be complete in the spring of 2026. Construction of these traffic signals is really dependent on signal poles. Can be up to six-month manufacturing lead time. Recommendation tonight is approval of the contract with Adiona Traffic Solutions for 606,456 dollars for the Chambers and Stro Traffic Signal. And funds are available to cover the construction cost of this. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chris. Questions, Laura?
Questions, thank you.
Anne, Eric?
No questions.
John?
So 600,000 is the, the new signal number, is that what it is?
When you layer everything in, John, with design, everything's about three-quarters of a million dollars.
Yeah.
Because there's lots of owner furnished materials beyond that we're also giving here. This bid was very aggressive, John. They left $90,000 on the table, about 15%.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandy, questions?
So, two questions. How many homes are scheduled to go in this area?
Well, I got to defer to somebody from Community Development. Does anybody happen to have Mr. Fusa in the room?
Sorry, John.
It's like the bat signal just.
Like you sensed I was going to have this question.
Let the record show that John Fusa, Director of Community Development, happened to be in the room and is addressing the council.
I knew I should have stayed at my desk. So in the Chambers Stro area consisting of the Hess Ranch Plan Development and also including the Anthology North Plan Development, the town has issued zoning approval for about almost 6,700 housing units, a substantial portion of which, about a third, are either built or under construction as we speak.
Okay, so then the reason we're wanting to put these signals in now is because I'm assuming it's going to be harder to put them in place once we've already got homes being established and construction in that area?
Correct. We, we see this Chambers Road as a, there's a lot of pent-up demand for this. Some people call it the bypass. So we see a lot of traffic on this road, not only with the homes that are coming, but just the background in the Parker area wanting to use this. We wanted to get it built now to try and get ahead of this situation that we know is coming.
Okay, and thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anne, questions?
No questions, thank you.
Todd, questions?
I, I see we got four bids, which is great. It wasn't long ago we were lucky to get one or two bids, right?
For traffic signals, we've typically gotten no less than three. We've had some jobs, roadway capital projects, we've only gotten one. Four to six seems to be a pretty good average for our traffic signals, for the most part.
Right. Well, it's always good to get different bids so we can be efficient and economical, so.
There was a couple I was surprised didn't submit bids on this, but it's just a matter of, they're too busy.
Thank you. Just a quick question, Chris. The fact that Chambers Road was built to all six lanes and having a, not a four-way, a two-way stop on six lanes, is that, is that escalating this?
It is. I mean, whenever you have an intersection of two, we have a principal arterial and arterial road coming together, it's going to be signalized. And when you look at the traffic projections, it's, it's going to be needed fairly quickly. And I'm just curious to see what the traffic numbers on this road are going to be in six months, because that's what it kind of takes to settle in, to people to relearn new ways to get around the community. Even Dransfeld Extension, which we opened just a couple of months ago, I'm shocked by how quickly people are balanced and moved into that, using that roadway.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. With that, we will open up public comment at 9:01 PM. Any member of the public wishing to address council on this item? Seeing none will close public comment at 9:01 and go back for comments. Todd?
No, I'm in support. Being proactive is great. Chambers will be very popular very quickly, and with the different number of lanes in that intersection, I agree sooner rather than later, so I'm in support.
Anne?
Yes, definitely in support of this, but I, I think it's, it's also a good example when you look at that number to see why we just can't throw a traffic signal up anytime somebody really, even though we would like one, just, it's just cost prohibitive sometimes. And I'm glad this is, you're being proactive with this, thank you.
And Brandy?
Yeah, and to Councilmember Barrington's point, you know, a lot of people might look at it right now and be like, why are you putting a traffic signal up in an empty road? But understanding the infrastructure, given the number of homes that are going to go there here really quickly, it, it is pertinent. So I am appreciative to, to what Anne said as well, and your proactiveness on it.
Thank you, Brandy. John?
Yeah, I think the process was good, you know, having, having four, four bidders. You know, the number on a traffic signal keeps on going up. You know, as Councilmember Barrington indicates, I mean, it'd be great to, to take care of all of those traffic signals. There are certain warrants that we have, that the staff has to adhere to, but doing the best we can to make the roads as safe as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Eric?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. And Laura?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Thank you. With that, council, entertain a, actually, the motion is in your packet, please. Who's got their packet open?
I move to approve the staff recommendation as part of the regular agenda.
Second. Thank you, Laura. I have a motion from Laura and a second from Todd. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Diak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that contract passes unanimously. Next up, we have item 7B, another contract over 500,000. Parker Road and Main Street Roadway Improvements Conceptual Design. Joining Mr. Hudson for this is Ms. Mary Mudicana, even more patient than Chris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Am I on? Yes, I am. Again, this item is for council's consideration of a design contract for the Parker Road and Main Street Operational Improvements Conceptual Design Project. This vicinity map shows the general project limits around the Parker Road Main Street intersection with Long's Way on the north, 20 Mile Hilltop on the south, 20 Mile Road on the west, and then Pine Drive on the east. Little bit of background. As we all know, Parker Road, State Highway 83, is a Colorado Department of Transportation roadway, and that serves as a major north-south arterial connecting Denver and Colorado Springs, and while it's also bisecting the Town of Parker. As traffic has steadily increased on Parker Road, it has resulted in heightened congestion, delays, and safety concerns. The Parker Road Corridor Plan that was adopted by council in 2019 identifies a need for roadway operational improvements at this gateway intersection in order to enhance safety, mitigate traffic congestion and delays, and improve pedestrian and bike movement in that area. The plan recommends an at-grade displaced left turn configuration as the preferred alternative in that plan. And, and it also is the preferred alternative for meeting the town's transportation goals while also being sensitive to the surrounding downtown land uses and the community character. Also, so the town now desires to revisit and refine those previous alternatives that were in the plan to confirm the viability and effectiveness of the proposed displaced left concept. This project is funded through a surface transportation block grant that was awarded to the town under Dr. Cog's Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP program. So the town was awarded 500,000 in federal funding plus the town's match of 250,000 for a total project budget of 750,000. So then in March of this year, the town issued a request for proposals to solicit firms to complete a feasibility analysis and a 10% conceptual design to advance that preferred displaced left alternative concept. So two proposals were received, and then Kimley Horn, their qualifications rose to the top. They, their submittals scored the highest, and the town has negotiated the project's scope with Kimley Horn for 720,120 dollars. And that does fall within the established budget. With that, staff recommends that town council award the design contract to Kimley Horn in the amount of 720,120. And also, funding has been approved in the town's 2025 community development budget. And with that, Chris and I are here for questions.
Thank you, Mary. Laura, questions for expert staff?
The federal grant funding, we, we had 500,000 dollars. Is that unusual to get that amount from the federal government for this? We don't usually get that many federal grants, do we?
That is correct. This is, Chris, is this a first for the town? Have you had one construction project with the federal funding?
We've had multiple construction projects. This is our first design contract we've done with federal funding.
Thank you.
Eric, questions?
Can you educate me on what a displaced left-hand turn is?
Do you want to take that?
I think I know, but it would be helpful to.
There was a small diagram, not a lot of detail on it.
Yes, it is. And this is, I'm going to say, and I'll let Chris interject, but this will probably be a hybrid displaced left. But the simple concept is to have the approach, turn left early. It frees up, it's going to free up the congestion right at Main Street and Parker Road. So you turn left early, northbound or southbound. Chris, you want to add to that?
So just real quick, this question, I guess, is for Chris, and I'm sorry, council. If I was to get off Quincy Road off of 470, is there a displaced left turn there that I've got to shoot over real quick in order to turn left onto Quincy? I think there is.
I think you're right. I was, I haven't been through this since it finished construction.
Is that the gun club?
Yes, gun club, yes, yes, yes. Yeah.
So there's not a lot of them in South Metro Denver, but it's really loud. There's not a lot of displaced lefts in South Metro Denver, but I've been in other communities that have them. And so, Eric, what you'll do is several hundred feet before the intersection, you'll actually take a left and you'll, a lot of this is contingent on redevelopment of like the Safeway Center. But basically, you'll make the left not at the intersection, but in advance of the intersection, there'll be frontage roads, so to speak, to get you up and around. And so there's a lot of work that has to happen here. The great thing about this 10% concept design is if things start to move forward with redevelopment on these sites, we'll have some sort of concept trying to show this. They're also going to go back and reevaluate some of the other options that we did back in 2019. Traffic's changed, and just make sure there's still a viable option going forward. But it's, at first, it's very awkward. I can tell you, my wife's driven through a few of these before, and she's been screaming at me, and she's like, you shouldn't turn left here. But drivers get used to it. It just takes a while.
Eric, John, questions? John, questions?
Yeah, I, I think my first question was, do you think we're ready for this as Parker? I mean.
Hence the hybrid.
Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, hybrid is a very nebulous term, which means that, you know, whatever I look at, it could be different, so.
People have asked me when I think this is going to happen. It's not happening tomorrow, John. It's not happening next year.
Yeah.
It's probably 10 to 20-plus years out in the future. And again, we want to be prepared if there's opportunities for redevelopment occur.
Sure.
So it's, do I think Parker's ready for it? I think we're going to have to do something in the future based on the traffic projections on Parker Road. We will be forced to do something because it won't, we have to do something different. What's there today does not work in the future.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, ultimately, my, my next questions were going to be, you know, when's construction, funding partner, possibilities, CDOT. Again, I think you've answered that with, this is, you know, this is sort of our first and initial preliminary step toward what to do to alleviate Parker Road's future challenges with traffic count.
You're correct. I mean, the Parker Road mass, Parker Road's, I can't remember where it was. Parker Road Corridor Plan 20, you also talked about Lincoln Avenue.
Yeah.
We have problems there as well. There's, there's changes that are going to have to be made to these really high-volume intersections in Parker, and this is the first step. In the future, we'll probably be doing something similar for Lincoln, but this is the first step here. And we got, again, getting the federal funds went a long ways for this, to move this forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, John. Brandy, questions?
No, no. No.
Anne, questions?
So many, but none that I can articulate.
Yeah.
Was, you said there was two bids. Do we see what the other, just, was that up there?
There weren't actual bids. So this is for professional services. So we, we got basically qualifications from them, and we interviewed them. But basically, there was just two respondents to that request for qualifications for this.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to go back to Brandy, question?
All right, yes. Okay, so the hybrid, and I understand the displaced left turn. If we fix that and we do that, what about the now back road that it's going off of? Because I've driven that one, and that one's one lane on both sides. So it's also not going to be capable of redirecting a whole lot of traffic. So are we just kind of opening up a can of worms here of like, okay, we'll fix this, and now we've got to fix this, now we've got to fix this? Because that's going to get into a huge, bigger project there.
So if I understand your question correctly, so a lot of this depends on opportunities with redevelopment to happen in the future, like at the Safeway Center, let's say that whole area redevelops. What you see there today is going to change dramatically. So it's, not going to say it's going to be a complete blank sheet, but we just want to be prepared for that. There's going to have to be changes, and we don't know yet what we don't know. And that's what the study is going to start to get a feel for it. If you're, are you talking somewhere else in Safeway, Brandy? Are you talking?
Well, and I might have read the map wrong. It looked like it was going to be both ways. It looked like it was going to be northbound and southbound. And so I'm talking about where the old gas station is, and like you take that road and there's the senior center there, because it looks like there's the left-hand displaced turn going southbound on Parker Road as well, and that road is very concerning to me as well.
So there's two different displaced lefts. I think both of them depend on what comes first. They won't have to happen at exactly the same time. But Safeway is a northbound left. A southbound left, there's still some opportunity there, but it could come off on the north side of O'Brien Park. Could also come off and tie in where Brownstone would be extended. There's multiple options there. So you, you just have to, we're going to be looking at that. Also, keep in mind, you got to take a step back and go, this is 20 years in the future. Main Street, as we know today, will be very different 20 years in the future if we continue to have the growth in Metro Denver. Josh and I have had this conversation for 15-plus years of what's going to happen on Main Street. I personally think that at some point in the future, there's going to have to be a, a one-way couplet done on down, on Main Street using Victorian. Because of the sheer demand for east-west traffic in this town, we don't have enough east-west routes. east-west routes. So how this ties in with this east-west couplet that we're, I think is going to be, we will not have an option. Traffic is going to get so unbelievably bad on Main Street when you look at the traffic projections, unless there's some magical teleportation that happens with cars in the future, we are going to have this fight no matter what. Our goal here is we have to get in front of it and have an understanding as staff and as council, so as a future council, everyone here will be term limited out, as it stands today, when this decision has to be made, but we have to understand what's in front of us, and that's what this 10% study does, is to get us in front of the bus.
And I understand that. I just, when you're asking us to spend 700,000 on something that's 20 years down the road when none of us have a crystal ball, that's just, that's a big, that's a big chunk of money to swallow right now of, you know, our citizen, our citizens' funds. So I'm just, I'm having a hard time grasping because, you know, we do have some new buildings in the Safeway that just went up that I'm sure will still be around in 20 years.
Sure.
It's just, it's a little hard for me to swallow that.
Sure, understood. And I would just add, Chris is, to his point, a lot of planning goes into any of these concepts. Chambers Road, for example, the new section that was just opened, how long has that been on the books? Maybe as long as that zoning and plan development was created 20 years ago plus. But that's how long it takes to vet some of these things, but just to let you know, this is another feasibility study of these alternatives and these options, so it may come back to us that, okay, we may have to, we may have to completely pivot to something else. And so Chris mentioned, very conceptual, yes, this is 10% conceptual design. Your next step may be several years down the road at a preliminary design, which is a 30%, Chris? So there's a lot of years of planning, vetting these options, so yeah, this is just baby step number one.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
And questions?
No, no questions.
Questions? So I think you nailed it in the last one. My question was simply, this is, this is just a planning exercise so we can make, not we, as Chris very well pointed, will be gone by then, but, so future councils will have more information to make better educated decisions, because we don't like to make mistakes with taxpayer dollars, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we have enough planning documents, engineering's, downtown safety circulation study even, he mentioned the one-way couplet. All of those things are on the table to consider, reconsider. We've got a lot of constraints also around with O'Brien Park, you know, all of those things have to be vetted, so yes, it'll be a process, and this is just, you know, baby step one.
So it's safe to say that we're not looking to change anything right now, we just want to set the future councils and staffs up for success?
Yes, you are correct.
Thank you. With that, I would open up public comment at 9:20. Anybody from the public wishing to address council on this specific item? Make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 9:20 and go back for council comments. Todd?
Yeah, I'm in support of this, obviously getting ahead of the curve and being proactive. This will be a big issue in the future, so it's focused now. Thank you.
Anne?
I love your comment, we don't know what we don't know. And 20 years ago, who would have ever thought that Chambers would be, I mean, it's going to be a very traveled road, and just because we can't picture it today doesn't mean it's not going to happen tomorrow. And I have missed that left turn off of Gun Club twice now, and now I guess I know why.
Anne, or, sorry, Brandy, comments?
I can appreciate the feasibility study of it, that helps me swallow it a little bit better, knowing that, you know, it can change, it probably will change, but we have to start with somewhere, so thank you for that analogy for me. Yeah, I understand, we got to, we got to make the steps forward to think about it, so thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're currently tracking and doing a significant amount of construction projects that help the now citizens. You also got to point and look ahead and start doing the work to kind of figure out what improvements, as we become fully built out, we can potentially do, and while the, while the funding, the grant funding is there, I think you take, you take advantage of it and you start going down that road, because once you get there, it's probably too late. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Eric?
Nothing to add.
Laura?
As I reach a milestone birthday in 2026, I can tell you that 20 years goes by fast.
She's going to be 39.
That's right. Looking at some photo albums the other day, I can tell you, I thought I was just in the Army on active duty yesterday, but it's been a while. So I'm really excited that you're looking forward, that you're going to get this done, that you have a federal grant. Excited that the feds granted that grant. It's going to cost us less because of that, and that our engineering department is on top of this, but Chris Hudson may not see this through to completion.
I will probably not.
Yes, thank you, Chris.
You didn't talk to me about that.
I think, yeah, just real quick, I remember 13 years ago, sitting up here, and the amount of studies, and we were going through some big ones back then, but the amount of studies we did, I just didn't understand how we could spend so much money to these consultants to study. Sitting here now, I fully understand, because we have to be prepared for when and if there is a large purchase of the Safeway development, and they want to scrape, and we're ready with a plan to say, we need to do this. This is not a study to say we're going to start going and annexing property and knocking down homes. This is a study to be ready for when those opportunities do present themselves. And I think, you know, anytime, I think John stated it, anytime that we can get those federal dollars back in our community, we need to make ourselves available to use those federal dollars. As we know, we, this community gives a lot to the federal government, and we don't get a lot back, so it's nice to have half a million come back into this community, and we're going to use it well. Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion, it's in your packet, council.
I move to approve the sack recommendation as part of the regular agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who got that? Laura? I have a motion from Hendricks and a second from Hefta. Todd?
Yes.
All right, Anne?
Yes.
Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.